In business. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is a court of selection meeting, December 5th, 2018. The pleasure supply, pleasure leagions.
To the Father and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we've got the agenda here, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes. And I'm going to, have you had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
And I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 7th, 2018, as written. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will then make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 13th, 2018, as written. And Rob and I were in attendance there, so can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion?
Everything looks fine to me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, dang, sorry. Can I ask that anytime we have a selectance, any type of meeting, we can get Microsoft notices of it that automatically populate your schedule?
If that can be done, I'd be happy. I'm not sure how it's done.
I mean, all the other, like the Board of Ed, whenever they send me a notice, it's always in a meeting, I can't think of the word right now, but it's always in a meeting format that automatically populates my schedule. So, I don't know.
Is it called Outlook?
Outlook, thank you.
Okay. I'm not familiar with it, but if it's doable, we'll see what we can do about doing that.
Okay, it just makes it easier when you're working and...
Otherwise, doing stuff.
Correspondents, we've got a couple of items here. And first is a letter, and it's from Sarah Goek. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the gist of it is that her taxes have been overcharged from 2008, and it was during the revaluation of 2007 an error was made. The house was computed at 2,469 square feet rather than the correct 1,904. It was not picked up in the 2017 revaluation. She was having issues with her husband, he was quite ill, and he had been dealing with everything, and suddenly she had to deal with everything, and didn't realize that there was a problem. During, you know, dealing with insurance and questioning whether rates were so high, the writer commented on the square footage of the house, at which point she realized there was an error. We went ahead, we reimbursed her for three years of that, and unfortunately, by state statute, you cannot go back beyond the three years. And I contacted Rich Roberts, our attorney, and said, you know, this is kind of special. Is there anything we can do about it? And he said, absolutely not, unfortunately, that by statute, they can only go back three years. He said, if you were to do anything on a 1K basis, you'd be absolutely flooded with people going back 100 years looking for reimbursements and corrections. And I asked him if there was any way on earth to do it, and he said, no. And I, simply before I informed the homeowner, I wanted to run it by you and make you aware of it. But to my knowledge, there's nothing to be done for it at this point. And it's not a question whether or not we'd like to, it's just, it isn't possible. Any comments on that, or any thoughts?
If there's nothing we can do, then...
Yeah, basically, it's very unfortunate, and...
You know, I'd love to be able to do something about it, but Rich made it very clear, said he's already, he's got one account right now where he's dealing with similar situation, and he's researched it thoroughly for that already, and it just isn't possible. And then for 4B, DOT construction season, tentative vendor in place for the paving, and they're going to be paving 151 out here. They're simply making us aware of what they're going to be doing. And it's for 2019 construction season. So, we're going to leave it this paved, and hopefully it'll be a little better shape than it is now. Selectment's report. Couple of things today, you'll find, I think, in your files there, the governor's announcement, approval of major disaster declaration. And basically, what this says is that there has been a major disaster declaration in connection with a severe rain and flooding, September 25th and 6th, and approval for public assistance for Middlesex and the London Counties has occurred. This means we will be receiving financial assistance from the federal government, FEMA, to pay for eligible costs. For the town, that means 75% of what it's cost us, which is going to be a godsend. We're looking at about $3.7 million. For private citizens and corporations, you're going to find that they can get low-interest loans, but they don't get a reimbursement on what they've expended. So, from our standpoint, and even from the people of the town, this is probably a godsend. We're going to do much better with it. That came out this afternoon, and I'm pleased surprised, I had not expected that kind of response for another six months. And going through our previous meetings, some questions, Harry Dickinson had a question about additional checks and balances to prevent a similar situation that would happen in the Kamala Road extension. Mr. Gelson agreed that the negotiation should have been better documented. That's change orders, those are kind of a standard. During this building, there's been endless change orders. I'm not sure why it wasn't documented. I don't think any of us were a part of that at that time. But I can assure you that in the future, we will be seeing to it that we have change orders. They document any change, the cost of it, why it occurred, and the justification for it.
When you have a change order in a project, I mean, do you have to, so why would we be involved?
We wouldn't be, but it's my...
As long as there's no additional cost to the project.
Well, there may be. A change order, I'm trying to think of some of the ones that have happened, as this building was designed and put together, you have a lot of ventilation, a lot of duct work that goes into it. All of a sudden, you find you're running into a wall that no one anticipated, it was enclosed. Now that wall has to be either hole punched through it, the duct work has to be rerouted, something has to happen. They estimate the additional cost to it, they bring it before the board or committee, whoever's in charge of it at that point, say, in order to do this, we need a change order, here's what it's going to cost you, you want us to do it, don't you? And you have to approve the additional costs.
So, when we have that with a road project, I mean, isn't, so that would have gone to Beth, right? I mean, I don't understand...
Presumably.
Yeah.
Right, so when she agreed to it, I guess I'm not understanding what the issue is and why...
What happened was...
Comes up every meeting. I know you're answering a question from a citizen, but I guess I'm just concerned that, you know...
What happened there was that the contractor, looking at it, said, and the way I understand it today, and I wasn't there...
I understand what happened, I'm just asking about the process.
Yeah, the process was, gee, it's called for a rebuilding of the stone wall three feet farther back than it was. It would have cost $32,000 to do it. And the resident at that site has said, look, instead of doing that, build me a couple of columns, and we'll settle for that, and it's only going to cost 6,500, the town's going to save a lot of money. They shook hands and said, okay, let's do that. With another contractor, or the way it should occur, is that you put a change order in, and you note the amounts involved, and everyone would agree to and sign off on it, and then it would be simply documented that you had done that.
So, who's everyone that would have signed off on it? I guess that's what I'm asking, like, so what's the approval?
The contractor would sign off on it, and whatever agency, in this particular case, it would have been Beth, who was in charge of the execution.
So, more or less, it happened, but there was no piece of paper that said...
There's no recording of what took place.
Okay.
And that's where the fall lies. With this building, every change has occurred, and I can call on Eric to, how many hours have we spent sitting there listening to change orders? And every change that's occurred has been documented. It's on paper, we know exactly what happened, exactly what savings were realized, or what caused them to realize.
I understand that process for that project, but I'm just saying, and in every year we have roads that we redo, I mean, they're all not going to come back to you if there's a change order.
Whoever the responsible authority is, whoever's in charge of it...
I'm just making that clear.
Yeah. And for this building, it's a committee, and it appears before the committee.
I understand that, yeah.
The real issue is that we had a town employee that received something in exchange for the wall, and there was no documentation at any point, apparently. And there should have been a change order put in, there should have been some sort of documentation, there was nothing.
Something we go back and say, oh, here's why it's okay.
So, the issue is because it was an employee of the town?
Yeah, it was a big part of it, yeah.
There was some questions about the markings with these curved signs, and I've gone out and looked at a bunch of them, and what has happened, whenever they have a curvy road and they give you diamond-shaped signs at both ends of that telling you the curves are ahead, not chevrons, but that these diamond-shaped signs with a curve on it. Every time you see one of those, between the two signs, they double yellow, with that brilliant yellow paint. And once again, I was not there when we agreed to how this was going to be done, I imagine that's in the...
So, that was part of that state contract from years ago with the chevron signs?
With the chevron signs.
It also said that we were going to do the double-yellow lines?
Yeah, that's in there. I mean, that's just part of the deal, and the state just came through and did it. There was a question, Mr. Brunel, about the Gateway Commission, new member, hadn't received his notice, it has been said, it was confirmed, and he is a member of it at this point. There was also a question Mr. Brunel raised, and it turned out Harvey Thomas as well, had issues with the Financial Needs Roundtable schedule, the evening that we had selected. It ended up being rescheduled, and everyone was able to attend, so that worked out fine. February 4th will be the next meeting of the Financial Roundtable.
That was already Monday, then?
I'm sorry?
Oh, February 4th, okay.
That's the next meeting. And I believe we met, what was that, last Tuesday we met?
This Monday, the third. I was going to say, did you meet this week?
Monday.
The third, you met the third.
Okay, Monday.
The third. You lose track after a while, there's so much of it. Todd raised the question of recycling, and whether or not single stream was the best, and maybe our sorting it before we sent it off to wherever it was going was a better idea. I would agree with him, that is a better idea, it worked far better for us. Willamette, which receives our waste, that's the rules, and they went to single stream, and that's what they require of us, we don't have any options than that. That's among all ahead from the last meeting. Okay, one other item, the parking area out here adjacent to the building, the front door, has been completely redone, torn up, repaved, portions of the concrete were repoured. Supposedly, it is now absolutely ADA compliant, done at no cost to the town. Contractors have assumed full responsibility for it. And, you know, we're two guys out there measuring and making sure it was right, and we may have further inspections, but to the best of my knowledge, it is now completely ADA compliant. One other comment, the East Haddam Free Public Library is at the Superior Court, has been for some time now. The judge approbate chose not to deal with it, and tomorrow, on the 6th, there's going to be a hearing on it. We were noted and asked to attend, we checked our lawyer, he looked into it, and Rich Roberts, our lawyer, and Scott Jessick, the lawyer for the library, will be doing the legwork on that, and we don't have to attend after all. So, hopefully, we're going to see some sort of an answer coming forth, and that's certainly taken long enough to get there. And that's what I have at this point. Moving forward, citizens' concerns. Do we have anything from the citizens? Ed?
Just one quick question, at the last selectance meeting, talking about the installation of the rumble strips on Route 82 and 149, I think, is there any further information on that?
I contacted them and told them, we voted here on that, and it was voted down. And I contacted them and made them aware of the fact that we did not want them. They came back shortly thereafter, and they wanted to put rumble strips on 156, going down into Lime off of 82. We own a short piece of that, maybe half a mile, if that, and they needed an answer by December 1st, and predicated on our decision before. I went ahead and told them no on that. That it was residential, that we didn't need the noise, that we just wanted a part of it. So, none of that will happen. Any other questions? Okay, moving forward. East Haddam Village Revitalization Committee. Where we stand right now, we have a brownfield application out with the state for grant for part of the cleanup. We anticipate some sort of a response during the month of December, hopefully in the first half of December. We're hopeful that we are going to get what we need and want. The RFQ is being finalized right now.
So, it was decided to do an RFQ?
They ended up deciding to do an RFQ, and upon close examination at the last meeting, it made sense, the way they're going forth. And the RFQ will include some sort of a discussion of what are you planning on doing with it? How's it going to look if you do it? But it's not going to be a portion of the RFQ. And as was pointed out during the meeting, the cost of actually putting together a full proposal is going to be enormous, and it was probably going to limit the numbers of people, or the numbers of organizations that would respond. And that by just going with a straight RFQ initially, we'll get a better response, and then we can move forward from there. So, that's where we stand on that one at this point. Transfer station?
One question on that, is there an anticipated time or date when we would hear on the grant request?
It's supposed to be done in December, and with the holidays coming up, I would imagine the early half of December rather than the latter half. But that's an assumption on my part. But yes, during the month of December, we will have it. In the same token, the grant that we're looking for with Haddam on the sidewalk on the bridge...
Build grant.
The build grant, for $18 million, is also scheduled to be announced during the month of December. And once again, I would assume it'd be before Christmas, before the holidays.
That's a federal grant?
That is a federal grant. The brownfield grant is a state grant. Anything else on that? Transfer station committee, discussion on that. We've got the plans for reversing the flow in there. I've talked to Beth about that, she has an order out right now for that door on the backside that would close, the garage door, the enormous one. That's on order, scheduled to come in sometime in the next few weeks. She wants to rehang the back gates so that we can let people deposit material on the backside of it as well, at the same time that they hang that door, and she wants to reverse the flow once they've done that. She wants to hold off until they've done that. So, we're building a schedule around doing it that way. That is planned, I would have liked to have seen it a little bit sooner, but I'm deferring to her on how to do it, scheduling.
So, that addresses the scheduling and the traffic flow. What about the other issues and discussions and proposals of the committee?
The hauling of the stuff ourselves, I think is pretty much a dead letter.
Why?
The initial plans, an understanding was when we approached the transfer station crew, and they were enthusiastic, and they said, yes, we'd love to do it, we'll drive it up there, we'll do the hauling. And we said, okay, and we moved forward based on that. We had a backup plan, that if they weren't sufficient, or if that created problems, we could use Public Works employees. We're also enthusiastic about it. Shortly after we passed the budget, the guys up at the transfer station had second thoughts and came back and said, no, we're not going to do it. We absolutely will not do it. We were in contract negotiations at that point, we included in the contract, they refused to sign. We went to mediation. Mediation occurred the end of August. Should have been in July, unfortunately, with what had happened for me, I was away, and it got postponed until the end of August. We went into mediation, we spent the best part of a day here, the mediator going back and forth. Mediator finally came back to us and said, it's as simple as this, you can go to arbitration if you want, it's going to cost you a fortune, and you will lose. Those are her words. After some discussion on that, we agreed that we would pull that requirement out of the contract. At that juncture, the feeling was we could fall back in Public Works. With what's happened since with Public Works, between the trees and the storm in September, made it very clear that they're not available to do it. The cost of putting on an additional driver, to do that driving for us, which is what it would amount to, would be in the neighborhood of $100,000, plus the equipment that we would need. And $100,000 on an annual basis for the driver. Savings were going to be far less than that. Just simply doesn't make sense at this point. For the future, maybe there'll be an opportunity, we can do it. Not a bad idea, but it just doesn't make sense right now.
So, okay, I understand all that, but in light of that, then it seems like it would behoove the town to move forward on addressing the commercial haulers that are bringing in a large quantity of stuff?
To continue.
Okay.
The bag system makes a great deal of sense. I'm writing right now articles, I finished the first one, I'm going to dovetail them You're going to be a while before we can get to that, please.
No, of course, of course.
Okay. I'm writing the articles, we're going to try to dovetail it with the reversal and everything. Looks like we can probably go to town meeting in January to make a decision about the bags. Assuming that we get the bags approved, I have a consent or an agreement with the haulers, both of them that I've spoken with, will discontinue using our transfer station when we install the bag system. They feel that that will work in their advantage, it'll cost you something to go to the transfer station, they'll see more customers coming their way, it'll work out for them. If we don't go with the bags, my feeling is that we go with a sticker that costs a fair amount of money, $75 is fairly normal. I think that will work just as well for the haulers. That's the game plan right now.
Okay. Primarily, I'm glad, and I think Sue will be glad to see that there's movement.
Yes, I am. I don't understand, and again, I don't understand, we can't add duties to our union employee, like, for the betterment of the town?
We have a contract with them, and the contract defines their duties. And we attempted to include that as part of the contract. And as I say, in mediation, and we did go to mediation, and we were told in no uncertain terms, we would lose in arbitration. That's the process by which you go when you have a disagreement. And that it would cost us a great deal of money to lose. And it was not something where maybe you'll lose, you might lose, it was you will lose.
I just thought there was always some type of wording in the contract that you could add things, but I don't know union contract though.
This absolutely, and we made every effort to do that. And not knocking it, I think once they had a chance to think about what it would require, what was involved, they had second thoughts and decided they really didn't want to do that. And had the trees and the storm not occurred, we'd have Public Works employees that we could probably use and be able to do it, but we just don't have them now. It would mean adding staff, and the minute you start adding staff, it just doesn't make any sense anymore. Down the road, you know, something else is possible.
So, the plan is right now, is that you will schedule a town meeting to discuss this as a separate item, or...
I'd like a town meeting that just addresses the question of bags, how we're going to do it. But I think that if we just simply, and Courtney, the lawyer, he said it's real gray, real fuzzy, we could just treat it as a fee, and we could just put it in. Takes 200 signatures to have a town meeting and to vote it down. I think if we just push it on to people, it'll be voted down. If we go through a process of education and letting people know what's going on, and why this is important, and what the value is, I think we can have them agree to do it.
Would you be doing public hearing first, before town meeting?
Public hearing first, and then town meeting, I'm sorry. I'm always overlooking the process. Okay, all right. Citation hearing procedure, that's on hold for the moment, we're still looking into that. We will be voting a little later on the control of animals ordinance and the trailer ordinance, those are on our schedule for tonight. And so, move past those, crisis and strategic...
Oh, you're voting on them now?
Vote on, do it right now, it's next on the agenda.
Correct.
I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm out of order, I'm thinking that, I have something else. And you have those in front of you. Transfer station. You have the draft ordinance proposal. Not that one. Here we go. And these have been cleaned up a little bit, if you look at the ordinance, you'll notice that some stuff in red for the control of animal ordinance, a number will be assigned when we actually add it to our ordinance book. And citation procedure will be added when the citation hearing procedure is passed. So, for the moment, we can pass the ordinance, it will not have any teeth, and if you look at the end of it, Section B is in red. And that has to do with the citations. And until we actually have that, we can include it, we'll have to come back and put that into it after the fact.
So, this is the original animal ordinance we did months ago?
This is basically the... This is basically the, uh, we can, we have to send this to public hearing, town meeting, to get it onto the books.
Do we have to do that again, once we get the citation?
And it will sit, we'll put through a change after the fact. At the, and we'll be adding citations to a number of things at that point.
And what is the attorney's, uh, holdup with the citation, right? Doesn't, isn't it with him?
It's, it's just trying to figure out how to make it work. It's very complicated. It's long. We've looked at a couple of systems that you can buy, and they're expensive, very, very expensive. We could never generate enough money to justify them. And...
So is this with the attorney, or is this with us? What's the holdup with?
The attorney, the attorney looks at it. He's given us some information on it, and he's skeptical about it. And we're still looking into just how to make it work. That's what's been the holdup right along. And we have, you know, the, the ordinance is straightforward enough. It's the bookkeeping on it, exactly how do you do it? And it's a very complicated system. And in the end, when you do do it, you get a court notice that the fine is okay, but it's still up to you to collect it, one way or another. So you get no assistance in collecting it.
I'm sorry, I was just wondering what...
It's...
Hold up, please. So these haven't changed since we did them back in last January?
Linda went through them, and there's some corrections in terms of spelling. Not so much in this one. When we look at the trailer, you'll find there's some corrections in there, spelling, and relatively minor. And then it notes what's gonna be deleted. And then, once again, the citation at the end of the, uh, the trailer one. And the notice that would go out on this, if I could read it to you, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, Musov's complex, meeting room one. Purpose of the meeting is to obtain public input and review and discuss the potential language establishing a control of animal ordinance, amendments to East Haddam current trailer ordinance. All residents of the town of East Haddam are welcome to attend. The proposed ordinance will be on the town website, www.eastham.org. For more information, call the First Selectmen's office, phone number, or email admin@. And dated this third day of January 2019, M.J. Lyman. And it'll be going out for the public hearing, so that we can go to town meeting with these two and get them approved.
It's relatively easy to modify the ordinance after the fact.
And we, once we get the citation in place and functioning.
So, let's make some motions.
Okay. That said, I'm gonna make a motion to hold a public hearing to review and discuss the draft language for control of animals ordinance. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'm gonna make a motion to hold a public hearing to review and discuss the amendment to the existing trailer ordinance. Can I get a second on that one?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. That's moving along nicely. Okay. Crisis and strategic communication plan. And, uh...
So, you want me to go over it?
Yeah, Sue, why don't you start that?
So you got all of our documents with our recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
We had a great committee, I will say. For, we were only missing one person when we voted on it, and it was voted on, these recommendations were voted on unanimously by everyone present.
Mm-hmm.
We had a good mix of people on the committee, since we had a resident that lives out towards Lake Hayward. You know, we had people with children on the committee. We had, um, Jeff Rhodes, Officer Rhodes, who was our resident state trooper for years before he became employed by East Haddam Police Department. The superintendent, member of the Board of Ed, member of the Board of, the chairman of the Board of Finance. So we met many times in the last couple of months. Each meeting was probably a couple hours long, and we spent most of the time in executive session. Our, we really wanted to know what the background was, what really happens at the schools with, in and around town when it came to security and threats, and now the processes we had in place. And so we based our decisions on what's in place today. And I think we're very lucky about how much we do have for security in the schools at this point. But we found our biggest issue right now is response time. You know, we are in the third largest town in the state, square miles, and response time for the police to get somewhere is nine minutes. That's our average response time. And most people know something happens usually within five minutes. The average accepted, I guess, response time is usually between three and four minutes. But just where we lie, there's a lot of factors with it. So we felt the best, looking at, you know, we had to look at costs, we had to look at costs of adding, if we wanted security, you know, so we looked at different proposals. And as you saw on the spreadsheet, we looked at adding a school resource officer, we looked at armed guards, right? Increasing current coverage and what that would cost us. And then, you know, how that would, what would be the biggest bang for our buck, I guess, and hit, impact us right away, and what could be what we thought the town could afford incrementally. And so, based on all that, we believe that adding, and we called it an SDRO, a school district resource officer, because one of our charges, our charge included the schools, but also included town offices. So since our municipal office is right here and within the school district, that's why we called it a school district resource officer. So we are recommending to create a hiring panel for an SDRO. So there's a few things, like, and what comes first, right? So first, we have to actually hire a police officer within our police department. And within that police department, then have people apply within the police department to be an SDRO, and then have a hiring panel for that position. So we wanna recommend, part of our recommendation is to hire an SDRO and recommend, hire a police officer, who then we recommend to the Board of Ed to hire an SDRO. And in, that person would be full-time, and where school is not in session, they would be used in other, you know, that's the summertime, it's a busy time of year, we have a lot of activity in town in the summer. There's also, you know, parks and rec, that happens in this building, happens at the schools. There's a lot that this resource officer could cover. So you have all the details of what we're recommending on the hiring panel and the police officer. The third bullet about the crisis communications plan, we already adopted at this committee. We just wanted to put it in writing, and I want to just make sure that you understood that, that plan, which I think is already underway, correct?
Is on, well underway.
Good. That'd be reviewed every two years, right, with new elected officials. We also are recommending that we engage the community through some forum, either, you know, you know, I think it has to be in conjunction, the Board of Ed and the Selectmen, in talking to the community about, you know, security and threats in our town. So we wanna, and actually, we wanna use Sullivan Lashane to help us engage the community in that discussion. And we're not stopping the committee. If, if the Board of Selectmen passes this, and then the Board of Ed passes it, you know, we actually will reengage in probably six months after the budget passes. If it doesn't pass at one of these committees, we'll reengage sooner. But we wanna, you know, just complete the recommendations and then also review the SDRO's position and what we feel it's accomplished, if it's accomplished anything, if it's, you know, and see if that's the right choice. Maybe that's not, you know, we just thought this was a good start of an incremental step. You know, placing three armed guards in our schools was, number one, very costly, and number two, that's a big step. We thought we could get where we wanted to be at this point with the SDRO.
Good.
And you have all the financial analysis that we did, and a job description of what an SDR, SDRO would do for the town and the Board of Ed.
So you're looking to potentially implement this for the next school year?
That's why, and we moved fast, 'cause we want this in the budget, right?
Correct.
So the budget's July 1st. We don't want it popping up, right, that, at the end of the budget year last year, the Board of Ed, you know, there was all of a sudden $200,000 thrown into the budget to say, oh, we have security needs, look what's happening, we have to... So Bill, Christopher O. Head, said, let's evaluate this, right? And so that's why this committee was formed, was to have a better understanding of what we really need. And we did review a lot of statistics and other things that, you know, we just felt are better not said in, in public, and...
I think probably we should get a motion in place, and then we can discuss it at length. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Crisis Strategic Communication Plan Committee and forward to the Board of Education for the review and consideration. Get a second?
Second. I guess I would be, I would be, I'm hesitant about your motion. The only piece that's going to the Board of Ed really is the SDRO position.
This is simply to accept it and forward it to the Board of Education. We're gonna accept it as, as what it is and forward it to them.
Okay.
For review. So...
I'm not really...
We're not approving it. We're accepting it.
Well, no, you either accept it, you approve it. What do you mean you accept it?
We're accepting it in, and we're gonna forward, and they're gonna kick it back to us.
That doesn't, I don't, I don't understand that. We have to approve it before they can look at it and, and approve hiring, and that's gonna be the Board of Ed's decision to, if they wanna hire an SDRO.
Well, and then I think we're gonna be on the other end of that, doing it. But let's discuss it as we go forward.
Okay.
'Cause I have some issues with it, as it stands.
Okay.
And I'm gonna kick it off and start it. It says, creation of a standing school district officer hiring panel. I'm a little thrown by the hiring. We hire twice in this. And to review and evaluate candidates for consideration of town employment. That sounds like everybody the town tries to hire has to go buy these guys. I have a problem with that, because...
Anyone they try to hire for a school district resource officer?
It doesn't say that.
Yes, it does.
It's, the hiring panel, all it says is to review and evaluate candidates for consideration of town employment, period. Doesn't limit it. And I, I'm just pointing out that from the way it's worded, it creates a problem for me. If you said, creation of a, and here, let me give you what I've come up with. You'll be surprised that it's really not any different from what you want, except for the way it's worded.
Okay, for consideration, SDRO.
Assignment.
Employment.
Well, let's, let's, you say employment, I say assignment, because you'll see why in a moment. To make recommendations of First Selectmen. And I do think the First Selectmen should be part of that panel, and I've altered that. Other than that, it remains the same. If you go to item number two, what you say is hire a police officer position within it for the purpose of creating a school district officer position. Sounds like you're hiring the person for that position when you read that. I change it just a little bit. It says for the purpose of freeing a full-time police officer for the school district resource officer position. And that relates back to the assignment. You've got four, you'll have potentially five officers available who could do it. I talked to Jeff at length. He didn't have a great deal of problem with what I wrote here. Indeed, he said in that item number two that you guys had worked on it, and that my wording worked a little better than what I'd been come up with. But basically, what you've got is a pool of police officers, and from that pool, you're going to assign someone this job.
Correct.
And it isn't gonna be just one person.
Correct.
It's gonna have to be more than one.
Correct.
So that's where the, for consideration of SDRO assignment comes from up above.
Rob, let me just explain. So, right, what we've talked about was having multiple police officers able to, again, they have to be approved by the Board of Ed, the people who'd be interested have to be approved by this hiring panel, and within the police department, right? But it'd be multiple police officers, 'cause right now they're on 10-hour shifts, and there would be, that way we wouldn't actually be ever off anybody. And if there was vacations and stuff, we could cover it, if there were multiple people approved. We tried to keep it to two people or something, so there's continuity within the schools and the, and the faces they see, but...
What I'm, what I'm doing here is making it an assignment from our standing police officer force. No, it's an assignment.
I, I get it, Emmett. Okay.
So are you adding an officer, or not adding an officer?
No, and, and we're gonna add a officer, but that isn't for that particular position. It's simply to enlarge the force enough so that you can do this.
Yes.
That's, that's why freeing a full-time police officer...
There has to be a better word than freeing, but whatever.
Well, you can use another word there, but that's basically what it does for that position, for the SDRO position. And you're looking at 50 hours a week for the school that you're gonna need an officer for. Talked to Jeff about this at some length. And it means there's at least two people every single week that you're gonna have to have. Probably a couple of weeks of training for the officer to get the background training that he needs to do this job. And once again, as you said, there's gonna be vacations, there's gonna be sickness, there's gonna be any number of things. We'd probably wanna qualify two or three people to do it. And certainly two, and maybe as many as three. And then you'd have a staff that could be assigned to do this job.
Right. So we didn't put the First Selectmen on the SDRO hiring panel, 'cause we didn't think it were necessary to have, the First Selectmen's already hiring the police officer, and we just wanted to make sure the process moves. So we just put a Selectmen on there, just to help with, so things can keep moving.
I do, I do think they work for the First Selectmen, ultimately.
Correct.
And I think it's important...
And to, in the hiring panels, to make recommendations to the First Selectmen. So, I'm, I'm just, that's why we didn't put First Selectmen in the thing. It doesn't matter. I don't really...
Yeah, I just, doesn't really change anything. It says, it makes it clear that this is an assignment from our stand- It says, it makes it clear that this is an assignment from our standing police force. And that residents, state trooper will make the assignments or whoever we determine should.
No, I don't think, no, no, the SDRO panel will make the assignments.
They're going to recommend that.
They're going to recommend it.
And they're going to recommend more than one person and somehow.
They're going to recommend whoever applies and if they pass whatever they decide are the qual- qualifications they want, then they're going to recommend them.
Multiples. And, you know, somebody's going to have to sit down, determine which hours who's working and, you know, from that assigned group, from that selected group. That's just where the assignment comes in.
Well, I'm sure the.
One guy can't do all five days.
No, I, we're not, we are not saying that.
We may break it up two and three, they.
They can, they, I'm sure they can work that out.
But that's what, that's why it's an assignment.
Is it essential that they work a 10-hour day?
It's in their contract right now, their union contract.
They have to work a 10-hour day?
So I think we'd have to make changes to it, not saying that they would.
Well, it is a 10-hour day at the schools. By the time, because there's staggered school and there's effort at the beginning and the end.
Right.
And talking to Jeff, once again, it's a 10-hour day that you're going to spend at the school.
So, and that would include athletic events and things after hours?
Well, after hours are, those are special. I think that's special, I want to say special duty. I think that's the part timers.
I, I don't know.
I think that's the part timers that they hire.
Depending on many after.
Yeah.
Events after hours.
I, I, you know, that's something where if they want police presence, they hire them. They bring in our.
The towns.
Yeah.
No, the Board of Eds.
I mean, Board of Eds.
Yes.
You know, this is during the normal school day that we're talking about, having someone available.
So.
I just want to make it, first of all, clear that it's only the SDR officers that the standing committee is going to be evaluating.
For consideration of SDRO, I gotcha.
Yeah, and I, and I do think that it should be seen as an assignment from our standing police force. And how we achieve that assignment is, you know, another question. But, and what we are doing is we are going to enlarge our police force in order to enable having someone do that. It's actually going to detract a little bit because we're going to have 50 hours. Whoever we hire is only going to give us 40. So it, it does take a little bit away from what we now have. I think we can probably handle that without too much trouble.
Robbie, any questions?
There's a lot of things to consider here and, you know, we have, quite honestly, since I got this.
Monday, I know, sorry.
Yeah. I would really like to have more time to evaluate this, obviously. And, and you also have, Emmett has a number of concerns at the bottom of this page here.
Well, those are things you're going to have to look at. The union certainly gets involved, seniority becomes a question in terms of who does it. Special training, we define as a couple of weeks. That's not a problem. Who pays? Do we?
Shared services.
No.
Yes.
I, I, I broached that and was told absolutely not.
Why?
I, I don't even want to get into it.
Well, no, you can't not answer me as to why, why can't it be in shared services? It's a shared, they're going to be doing work for both the Board of Ed and the town, just like the IT people do, just like finance does. Just like, why are we, so you broached it with who and what was the answer?
I broached it with Cindy and that's a stone wall. It's not going to happen that way.
But why? What's the reasoning?
It's simpler. If the town pays for it, we build a Board of Ed for their share.
No, because then it goes into the Board of Ed's budget and that's what we don't want.
Okay, well, we can talk about that.
So, no, I don't understand, no, you have an answer from Cindy who works for us.
Yep.
Okay, what is the answer she gave you as to why it can't go into shared services?
I did not at depth investigate it. And we can do that.
So you just said Cindy, okay, Cindy, it can't happen.
This is what we want to do. She said, it's not going to work. You can't do that.
Why?
And I did not have the time to investigate that in depth. If you want to come here and spend an hour or two talking, you can do it. I don't have it right now.
I spend many hours here, I will.
Fine.
So, so these are some, appear to be some of the things that need to be addressed before we move forward on this. And I think further discussion maybe outside this forum might be useful.
Well, no, I think it'd be good to have Cindy maybe come and explain it at the next meeting.
Perhaps can do that. And, you know, the other questions are how do we do it, arrange the days, the weeks?
Well, that's all got to come after. I mean, this is just a proposal on recommendations, how to get done what we need to get done and have some more safety around our schools and our town office. Especially when we got the, did you get the 911 today? There was a threat on the bomb on the bus. They had to change the.
They, they did some work with the buses today, yes, changing them around.
Oh, yeah, because there was a threat that there was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware.
So I'm just saying, and I, you know what? We made our recommendations. If you don't want to vote on them today, that's fine.
I, I think perhaps we should table this.
The next meeting, I expect an answer as to why it can't be in shared services.
You sit down with Cindy and you think that one.
Because it, you know, because there's some things here that could be considered, well, have to do with employees and have to do with issues of security, maybe an executive session meeting with a couple of people invited in might be valuable.
That might be a good idea next time.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. We actually talked about having our whole committee come and talk to you in executive session because a lot of stuff we couldn't talk in public.
And maybe that'd be the best.
But the financing is a public forum conversation.
And I pursued that for you as you asked and was absolutely told no.
Yeah, but, but a no from an employee doesn't mean a no as in it can't work. I, I guess so I'd have to know the reasoning why it's a no.
We'll give her the opportunity to explain the no.
Okay, great.
And take it from there.
So you're taking the motion off the table?
Your motion fails. You don't get it.
Yep, we're going to table it.
Good.
Okay. Found you, Rob. I've lost my agenda now. What did I do with that?
I will say that Bill Kristofaro, who's the chair of the Board of Finance, was on the committee. We talked where the funding would come from.
Let Doug displace my agenda. You got an extra one there? Thank you. It's in the works of paper somewhere. Oh, you're going on a new business. Homeland Security Memorandum Agreement Resolution. That's not the day there. And we get this every year. And basically, we get our share of the funds and turn it over to E- DEMHS, Homeland Security. And so I'm going to make a motion to recommend the adoption of the following resolution, resolved that the town of East Haddam may enter in and deliver to the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security and all other documents which it deems necessary to appropriate and further resolved that M.J. Lyman, the first selectman, town of East Haddam, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of East Haddam and to do and perform all acts and things which it deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents completed by such documents.
Contemplated by such documents.
I'm sorry?
Contemplated by such documents.
Contemplated by such documents. Excuse me. Get a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, my God. Papers there and I've lost 18. There we go. Okay, this came up recently and basically Valley Shore, there's an opportunity to get some funding for them. And Essex, the town of Essex stepped in and said, look, we'll do the paperwork, we'll do the legwork and get it. And then they came back and they said, we have to have a letter of intent from each town to which the grant is fund, funded. Funded work will be performed reflecting their support and commitment to the project. It's about $1.2 million and it's going to improve Valley Shore and allow them to give us much better service. Each of the towns involved have to do that. A little bit of a question as to whether it was something I could simply sign and just go ahead with, but I said, you know what? We'll bring it here, let you take a look at it and then we'll go ahead and send it out. So take a look at that letter and make sure you're comfortable with it. There you go. Any comments on that or any discussion?
You have to make a motion first.
Oh, we did put it in more motion form. I'll make a motion to send a letter of intent to the town of Essex, Board of Selectmen regarding the grant of $1.25 million received by the town of Essex on behalf of the Valley Shore Emergency Communications for upgrades the outdated emergency radio dispatch system serving 11 towns, reflecting East Haddam's support and commitment to this project. Get a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
No, wait, I have questions. So what, what kind of things are they doing and is this going to ultimately cost us?
No further cost to us. It's simply an upgrading of dated equipment. Upgrades to emergency communications and radio dispatch system to allow interconnectivity through the Valley Shore Emergency Communications Incorporated amongst the 11 towns.
So does this have to do with our radio system that we're putting in and is it going to affect it at all?
No, no, this is our emergency, says 911 when you call, you get Valley Shore and they dispatch. And this is to upgrade their communications.
So their communications, it says, to our, interconnect to all of our member towns. So is that going to affect our new radios?
It integrates with our system.
Our new system that we're putting in or is it going to?
No, no, not our internal radio system is what you're talking about.
I don't know, whatever we're spending $2 million on for our radio system.
For the emergency services, ambulance, fire department, this is how they communicate with each other, communicate as they're going to the hospitals.
So they don't communicate with 911?
Yeah, they don't use, 911 will dispatch them, but beyond that, they have to be able to communicate amongst themselves.
And with Valley Shore, though. They do have to communicate with Valley Shore.
And they keep, they keep them apprised of what they're doing, but that's a separate system from.
So they don't have to talk to each other, they're not going to, it's not going to affect us?
No.
They put in a new system and it doesn't work with our system?
No, it would be coordinated.
Two, two separate systems we're looking at.
Separate but coordinated systems.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have an annual notice or a legal notice for our annual town meeting. From this side, I'm going to make a motion and to approve the following call for a town meeting. Lectures and citizens of the town of East Haddam, Connecticut, qualified to vote in a town meeting are hereby warned and notified that the annual town meeting will be held in the Town Meeting Hall on Town Street in the said town of East Haddam at 8:00 PM Tuesday, December 18th, 2018 for the following purposes. Two with item one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to accept a grant in the amount of $24,800 from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation entitled Fiscal Year 2019 Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program for Municipalities. Item two, to consider an act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to authorize, to, that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to enter into all necessary agreements with the Transportation Commission of the State of Connecticut for the receipt of state aid for town highways in accordance with the general statutes of Connecticut. Item three, to consider and accept the annual town report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And discussion on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a letter here. The Rathbun Library and Community Lions are hosting the annual light-up holiday silent auction fundraiser on Saturday, December 8th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. As in the past, we are seeking permission to have beer and wine at the event. It's an adult event, takes place after the library is closed, raises thousands of dollars to those in need in our community. And with that request, I'm going to make a motion to approve beer and wine service for the Rathbun Library for the annual light-up for the holiday silent day, silent auction party, December 8th. It's December 8th, day after tomorrow, 2018. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Board of Commissions, Board of Fire Commissioners, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Howard Vog for a second three-year term to expire January 1st, 2022 as a member of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Get a second on that?
Second.
And I do have, and you have on hand, recommendation from the Board of Fire Commissioners to recommend him to us for reappointment. And can we get us, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tax refunds. I make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented. $186.99 to Sarah Gray, $568.37 to A-Car Leasing LTD, $339.01 to Galco Fleet Trust, $147.50 to Betsy Borg, $24.91 to Toyota Lease Trust. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But as an aside, the earlier letter from Ms. Gork regarding the refund that has not been processed yet?
It's simply a request that I'm making.
Request, okay.
And I.
But you said it was approved or that, I mean, they would have honored the three years, but no further. I just.
That has already been done. Those three years have been paid back to her without any issue.
Okay.
And the thought.
I'm just wondering, we don't have to approve that?
No.
Okay.
That was an error on our part. It's been corrected.
Yes, I, can tax collector address that if she has any? Thank you.
Go right ahead.
They were refunded because they technically saw them. It was about $700, $700 and change. That was applied to.
Thank you. So, there's no actual refund, just reduction in?
Kind of a credit where it's.
Credit, yes, okay.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
That was my question. Thank you.
All set? Public comment again.
Brad. Two quick things, going to Sue Link's discussion about the per committee. I hope when you talk about the shared services issue, which is a finance issue, I think that's public and not.
Correct.
It would be inappropriate to do that. Security stuff, I understand, but finances should be in the open. Second thing is, I continue to be disappointed that commercial haulers are dictating to the town how we're going to handle the transfer station regarding to bags. That's terrible.
I don't believe they're dictating how we're going to handle it.
Well, you, actually, you said, you said they would be happy if we went to bags because they'll get more customers. That's, that's what you said.
They have.
And that's troubling to me.
My orders, they are permitted to deposit material there.
I understand, I understand, but fees could be charged to the haulers as well. So, you could charge, charge fees to everybody.
And you know what? If they continue after we do the bag system, they will be charged fees, appropriate fees. No question about that. That, that crossed my mind already and I thought about it. It's, it's real simple. That fees get charged across the board, probably on a, depending on how many customers they have, and the fees would be appropriate. Something, something came to that.
I know it's not like we're going to record on this issue, but one, it's not going to go down well with the townspeople.
Well, we'll see what happens. Yes, sir. Lou?
I have a couple of things. The first thing is, the haulers, do they bring trash in from other municipalities like East Haddon?
Strictly East Haddon, nothing but.
So, if I want to pay somebody, my neighbor, to bring trash to the dump, why is that a problem?
It's, it's one of the issues.
It's the same trash, whether I bring it or he brings it.
And that has been.
It makes no sense what you say.
That has been the logic that's been in place for many years. And I, you know, I served on one of the transfer station subcommittees, commissions.
So, you agree with me or you don't agree with me?
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they, anything that they pick up could be carried by the owner, by the generator and delivered for free.
Because right now, I pay somebody $7 a week to bring everything to the transfer station.
Always been understood to be a service that's provided you of transporting your material.
My second thing is, the safety of our school children. It appears to me that we're kind of getting tangled up in the weeds and the minutia and the wording. It doesn't seem like there's consensus with some of the board members that we do have to hire at least one more police officer. We should be going forward with that and talking about that and how we're going to protect our schools and our children and the town buildings, not worried about who interviews who, how we divide up the money.
I think we're somewhat in agreement about having it done.
Let's not kick this down the road.
I, I don't think it's going to kick.
Let's move forward with this.
Yeah.
That's my, my comment.
Others? Okay, thank you. Selectmen's discussion, holiday doors, East Haddon holiday doors, village stroll is going to occur on the 8th. I believe that's about the Saturday. And we've got a flyer here on it. We're dressing up the village right now for that. And I understand it's starting to look pretty good. So, try and make it down there for that. Rob, anything?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. So, I think at last, the last meeting, you stated that the, or could have been the prior meeting to that, that the tree warden is, the Beth Lunt goes out and identifies the trees that need to be removed to the tree crews. Well, I saw a tree crew working on one of the roads and I stopped and chatted with them for a while and I said, "Well, how do you determine which trees need to be removed?" And they're assigned a road and they cut the trees down that they, they think are dead. No one's pointing out any trees to them.
That's something I'll ask her about. She is the tree warden, she's the ass worker.
If I understood your comment, that's, she told you that she identifies which trees need to be removed?
That's her responsibility.
That's, so, she didn't say that. She just, she didn't say that she identified them, she just said, "What?" Because I, I was under the impression you asked her how that happened and.
And she is tree warden, designates the trees. And if she wants to assign that to someone, I'll have to talk to her about that and how that's worked.
Are they not able to know which trees are dead?
Well, the, the, there's multiple issues. One is that there's some trees that are really hazardous and there's other trees that might be dead and dying, but right now, everything's being taken down. So, we may be paying for stuff that isn't absolutely essential at this time. And the crews are working, you know, a lot of hours taking care of this and I'm not sure we're getting the most bang for our buck at this point. DOT marked the roads for trees that needed to be taken down.
On state.
On their state roads, so, so.
So, this wasn't a state road. So, do we have a process in place yet? Like, for our budget? Our budget's coming up, like, so are we, remember we were going to go through, you have to really go through and evaluate what trees need to come down and how much it's going to cost and all that?
I have been in discussion with Kirma about how we handle that and what we do. And there's a process being developed right now. CAG is involved with it. We've had shared services meetings in connection with the trees and how perhaps we can work as a unit, towns. We've been over to the Agricultural Center, who is putting meetings together. We've had people from all over Connecticut attend them.
So, Kirma's going to tell us our liability if we don't get?
And discussions of how we move forward with this. We have a great many trees that have to come down. How do we determine which trees come down when? And what's the process? Because to be perfectly honest, we can't take them all down at once. And to be honest, we couldn't even hire people to do it. One of the issues that's developing is you can't find staff. That there aren't people out there looking for these jobs right now.
You mean contractors? We're not hiring someone for public works.
No, no, we're not going to hire public workers. We're just looking for, but the contractors can't hire additional staff. It's, it's a saturation, it's down to the point where the question's of where do you take the trees after you cut them down? We're running out of places and destinations for all this wood. And one of the suggestions is chipping them all and turning them into mulch.
So, we're going to have some answers to do the budget because the budget's coming up?
I know the budget is coming up and this is a, a major issue that we're really working on. But it isn't just us, as I say, it's a collective thing. We're meeting at least once a week right now, having discussions about trees, how are we going to handle it?
So, in the follow-up, which may or may not clarify or cause more consternation, one of the questions that was raised several months ago was using fellers, mechanical things to remove trees and.
Fellers probably don't make a lot of sense. I've investigated that and we've talked about them.
And you said that at the time, that there was no one that wanted to do that kind of work on the roads because of.
Not on the roads. It's too difficult, it's too slow.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just not something that is practical for what we have.
Except that DOT used a wheeled feller down on Hopyard Road, removed 100 trees in one day with a chipper and it's a contractor out of East Windsor, I think. So, they, this equipment is available, it can be used. I watched him work and, you know, he can pick up a ton and a half piece of a tree and cut it down in about a nanosecond and he puts it to the side. And working with this piece of equipment was a chipper, which can remove something to the diameter of 43 inches and just chip it. So, so there is some equipment out there that could expedite this.
And if you've got roads with no power lines.
Which we do in areas.
Not a great deal. That feller can possibly go in there and do it. The minute you have power lines, you get a problem. And then the feller moves slowly, Hopyard Road is tree to tree to tree to tree. But you actually got to move it down the road, do a tree, move it down the road. Moving is probably going to take more time than doing a tree.
They're wheeled vehicles.
Yeah, I understand that, but it takes time to move them, relocate and position them, get the tree.
I watched them move from one tree to the next and it took them about two minutes.
And if you've got, if you have acreages you wish to clear, it's the greatest thing that ever happened. I've spent probably a couple to three hours online watching what they can do, seeing how they can do it, then talking to people, "Why can't we do that?" That's been my question.
Well, they actually had a tree crew working with them if they got near a power line or something like that, but there's much that you can do, where they can work on the opposite side where they're not impacting it. So, I think, you know, it might be worth revisiting because it appears there are some options available to us that might expedite this issue. It might be cheaper in the long run because if it's all chipped up, we're not tying up two or three men.
Do me a favor, go out and research that for me, would you please? Because.
We can have the contractor give us the price and whatever, so.
Go out, find them and bring them in, let's talk to them.
I can do that. I have his card.
I'd be delighted to have you do it, but I don't have the time to go chasing it right now.
As long as you act on it after. Okay, so, I have two comments. What about the last time I was, I talked about delinquent taxes and who makes the policy for how quickly we go after taxpayers? I'm not saying we should go after them after 30 days. Some towns start putting liens on their, on their wages after 30 days. I'm saying, I know we wait three years, why don't we wait a year and then go after people? Why are we, so whose, whose policy is that?
I can't address that, but perhaps Denise, you could offer some insight?
The policy is mine, it's to my discretion.
And you, and so you made the policy that's?
It's set by state statute, my discretion.
Right, so you decided that you would wait three years before we go after?
You're selling people's houses, yes.
How about putting liens on their wages?
Liens a lot every year.
They go on their wages?
A lien gets placed on their house.
So, can't you put a?
Garnish their.
Garnish their wages?
Can I say something?
I don't think you're allowed to right now, but sorry.
A lien and a judgment are two different.
Okay, so, you can't garnish their wages because we get them at work for people all the time for not paying their taxes?
Finance knows, one town only taxes to work the town. And they'll work, work on something with them, either I get half of it or I get all of it, go towards their taxes.
So, but we don't.
People that are delinquent right now, 90 days on their motor vehicle and personal property, and this July is billed, have already been sent to the collection. So, I don't ignore people's taxes.
Okay, I just think three years is a long time for people not to pay their taxes.
Well, I'm not going to.
So.
Enforce my tax sale collections any sooner than I already am.
Is there?
We still get the money and we get a lot of interest.
Is there a limit or a short?
Three years.
Why three years, why five years, one year, whatever, I mean?
It's what I decided. And it's also discretionary. If it's a foreclosure and it's six months delinquent, I'll send that one, it's a foreclosure, it's a pay, they can pay.
Good, thank you. And then I will just reiterate the comment from Mr. Solkra that, you know, we moved as a committee, we worked a lot and a lot, a lot of time. We don't want to sit on it because things tend to fit here. And so, I would like to make sure that this motion gets back on the agenda for next, when we have some answers.
You're speaking of your, the school?
Yeah.
That's a gimmick.
And again, you know, it's about the children, it's in, in the town's safety. It's not about who's on what panel and if we're going to take your duties away from you. That's not what we're trying to do.
It still has to be worded accurately.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I understand that, but it has to be worded correctly and words matter.
So, a few minutes ago, they brought up the local radio system that we've been working on for several years now. What is the status of that?
I have not been able to attend the last couple of meetings, I really don't know. Supposedly it's moving along, but I can't really brief you on that.
Maybe by the next meeting, we could have someone or get a written statement or?
See if we can get someone here.
Read the next board of finance minutes because Craig came to the last board of finance meeting and did a whole to-do on it, to explain where they are with it.
Because, you know, that's been out there for quite a while. I know there were some issues before, but I was wondering what the status of those issues were. And I have one other thing, is, would you contact or find out what the costs were to patch and pave and skim coat, petticoat, this last, last month or whenever it was? I mean, I signed off on $33,000 worth of bituminous slips, you and I both did. And I don't know if that all went there, but I'd also like to know amount of time that was spent on that, you know, labor and equipment time, et cetera. Because all of that will be ground up next year. And, you know, so we're looking at a substantial amount of money that, for whatever reason, we're basically grinding up and throwing it, well, or putting it into gravel, so, shall we say. So, I hope we're being more efficient in other ways. I mean, I've heard stories that this didn't have to happen and all, but, you know, I just, you know, you have to determine what's going on. So, it'd be nice to know that to begin with, so.
I can tell you that Beth, at one point, I asked her about that, Beth, why we couldn't finish it. She said we probably could, except that the grass fall really isn't going to bond properly at that late in the season. She was very concerned that the storm had slowed everything down, pushed us out a little farther than she was comfortable with.
Well.
And that's, that's at least a portion of what took place.
That may be a portion of, but I understand that the actual decision not to move forward with the paving of petticoat was made before the September floods.
I don't know that.
Well, maybe it's a question that needs to be asked.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have at this time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.